Good night, everybody. This is a wordless session. This is June 25th. And we're in the St. James County Chambers. We're going to roll downhill a little tonight. So we appreciate all of you wonderful people in the audience. We will have a mayor's award. We have a presentation to Alliant. And number three, you have a public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Teslin is going to make somebody a lovely home.
Do we have three bids on this property? Again, 209 South Gunnison, between Smith and Division, just west off of Gunnison. It's a two-bedroom, one-bath on a 45 by 156 lot. Does need to be cleaned out, a lot of upgrades. I know we've had a lot of inquiries about homes and being able to buy cheap homes and just move into them. They do require a lot of work. You do have to have a licensed plumber and licensed electrician upgrade or make sure that all the plumbing and electrical are up to code. So that's, I guess, one of the biggest questions we've gotten since the last sale did not sell is can I just buy this and move in as my own home? And the answer is no, it does require some work before you can move in. And it does have to have licensed electrician and plumber do that for you. So, but regardless, we do have three bids and hopefully we'll have someone acquire and fix it up.
It's going to make somebody a lovely home. We'll see you guys all down here and hopefully you bring me some more properties that we can, we can go ahead and move. You guys good?
Yes.
Number four, public hearing, consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Depot White Boxing. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening. I'm not going to throw up any plans, like actual the plans, because it doesn't really show much. I'll just talk about kind of what we're doing with this project. This project is a rehab of the north section of the depot, the former Greer's Restaurant. This white boxing project includes a lot of utility work. So new water service, new gas service, new electrical service, new sewer service are all having to be brought in. Then rehabbing the inside, bringing the electrical up to grade on the inside and then doing a drop-down ceiling similar to what's done in the great room. There's some window panes on the outside, the arch. We'll try and replace them. I had done an estimate prior to, I think it was last budget season. And then we went through some conversation and the Economic Development Board awarded $120,000 to this project. Last year when we were doing the stormwater sewer work at the depot, we completed a sanitary sewer lateral because we used the same trench to try and save some bucks and not replace concrete twice. So we spent $15,000 of the 120 then. We also have a $75,000 challenge grant on top of the 105 remaining to add up to about $180,000 to complete this project. The engineer's estimate with some contingency and admin fees in there is $134, $476.75. On top of that, we are trying to do the great room floors again. It was part of the original great room project, but I don't think anybody understood the mag, what to do with those floors. Then we hired, we had Royal Concrete come in and they did a 10 by 10 square and they got it up to where we want to do that. So we have an estimate from what, from them on that. There's specs in here calling out to go out to bid for that as well. So it'll, in all, it'll be about $164,000 project. There's a couple alternatives on here. One is for replacing the windows with all-new windows that like the ones that are in the great room. Unfortunately, that is a change order of about $27,000 in difference. So we would be over budget to try and do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was going to ask, the ones that are in there right now, are they functional? They're not?
They are, they're functional, but they're cloudy. There are some cracked ones. So there, I guess there are two or three that need to be replaced. But if you're replacing them, the whole bottom pane, there's some up and down vertical, there's some rotting in the bottom of them. So they'll try and cut them out and patch them. But should you run into issues, it probably might cost more than that. I think we have a pretty solid project going forward. I was a little nervous walking into it just because you don't know what interior renovation's going to be. But I can answer any questions. I can bring the full, I have the full spec sheet and it's like 300 pages, so.
I'm sure you see you finish off those, the glass.
It would be nice to get the glass done, but that's pretty pricey.
I guess I'm behind it. Did they already put the berm up that they were talking about at one point in time or is that?
For the storm or for the river?
No, the berm for the river, right.
No, there's no, there's no berm through there.
It's designed, any work to, for flood protection was in the flood, the flood project, the last phase of that.
Okay, the last phase, okay. That's what I thought, but I couldn't recall it, so thanks.
And I'm not telling you anything you don't know. My husband's the one that's hoping to renovate the Greer's, so I'm going to accuse myself from commenting on this or voting on it.
Thank you. Where, to most, where are we at with Matt as far as, I mean, do we have a tentative lease structure, pricing structure?
We proposed a lease with pricing included in it, a year and a half, almost.
We've had a conversation over the last year on a lease, but with kind of funding in the ways of not knowing to be able to do the project, that kind of didn't.
One of the biggest issues that he had for dealing with this was, I mean, we had a certain amount of dollars to put into the project and he didn't know if, you know, getting it up to white boxing standards, if you're going to be over that amount or not. And he was leery how he was going to cover any of that overage and so was his, I think, so was his financing in terms of how you fit that in.
So is the, is the plan to take whatever the city has put out for expenses with this project and try and recoup those costs through that lease? I mean, obviously, we don't make investments into buildings just for anybody at no cost. So is that thought process or?
What we proposed for a lease rate was, I think it's $9 a square foot plus common area maintenance.
There's camp charges on that.
Charges. And, I mean, that rate was just based on comparable figures for other, other space. And we got that, we worked with Jesse Caston on getting some idea where that should be in the ball, what the right ballpark should be for that. One of the comments he had in terms of, if you're trying to recoup costs, this isn't the lease structure that will do that. At the same time, get into a marketable rate that, and try to recoup costs. Those aren't, you can't do, you can't do both. So, I mean, you've got to have a determination to try. I mean, his comment again was, spending this much money to lease space at $9 a square foot just doesn't make financial sense. So if that's the only reason that we're doing this project, that, that doesn't make.
It's not.
So.
It's not, but that, I mean, you've got to ask the question.
Yep.
So that's why I'm trying to understand the frame of reference that the previous councils have used when discussing this project.
That wasn't the frame of reference that was being used.
Okay.
So. But the, what we have proposed for a lease rate to.
Is market rate.
Is market rate.
Okay. And I think that's about the only thing you can ask for at the end of the day.
From a fair, from our perspective, from a staff side, we have, that's where we can go. That's what we should need to be trying to.
And then when's the project, when's our part of the project expected to be completed?
Completed, I don't know that. I mean, we'll be going out to bid on June 3rd, getting bids back July 3rd. I said June, didn't I? I apologize. July 3rd, getting them back, first week of August and then awarding. So I would say construction starting is probably a September 1 timeframe.
All right. And then how, what's the timeline?
Three, four, five, six months. I mean, depending on issues that they run into.
So are we, are we anticipating then having an agreement with Matt in place, probably spring of next year, and then having him take over what, what he needs to do on his end in order to be able to get that done?
I would say we'd probably start looking to do that this fall yet because there's going to be work that he as a potential renter would want to do during.
Build out.
During construction to not have to rip out stuff that is done and then redo it.
Okay.
I guess for, for my thought on it would be, you know, I, hopefully it'll work out well for Matt, but if not, if the building's renovated, we have a better shot at getting somebody in there and keeping somebody in there for a long term. And if you can get the north half of that building done, hopefully the south half will soon follow us. I think it's a good project. The building's been neglected for a while and we can't stop progress now.
Well, but at this point, I mean, we're going to work with Matt.
Sure.
He's put in a lot of time and energy and to make this project happen, so we would.
Yeah, I know that. But I'm just saying, if it didn't work out for him, it'll be done for somebody else too, so.
Right. You guys good?
I'm good.
Yes.
As you talked about costs, were you incorporating the design costs too from?
Those are, those are incorporated into the.
And then construct, any construction oversight costs?
Yeah, there's 25,000. There's some, there's some room in there for construction administration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number five is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 TAMA Building permeable alley. Come on back here.
I didn't know that I was talking about this. This project here is a, is a shared public-private partnership. It is a, a green alley, which a green alley is not necessarily grass. It's a permeable pavement design. This project is the alleyway between Washington and Jefferson and then between Third and Fourth. This is a combined project in that the TAMA Building developers are going to do the south half of that alleyway. And then we, we through a grant, IDALLS Grant, Iowa Department of Ag Land Stewardship, is taking care of the north half. So we're bidding this north half out only. We've seen and reviewed the plans from the TAMA Building. We need to get these plans and specs approved so that way we can get these going kind of simultaneously. Our hopes are that the contractor on the TAMA Building project will be able to do both alleyway sections at the same time to, to help get it done quicker. There is a timeline restriction though, the grant. The completion of this construction needs to be done by December 31st. So there's a little bit of concern in that it would be completed by that timeframe because if it weren't to be completed, we'd have to be able to be responsible for those funds to get the work done. But I have, I haven't, I haven't heard anything on the grant extension request.
Okay. So even if we had our half done and they weren't completely done with their half, that's, that's the project not completed?
Correct.
And we're, we're counting the, the work that TAMA is doing as local match.
As the match. And that's the reason why it's important.
And we've, we've delayed this multiple, several times over the last year.
Because of TAMA.
Because of the project.
And are they familiar with this timeline and they've agreed that they, they can work with them?
Correct. I, I would like to sign contractual documents that say that this is contingent upon completion of the other set of project. Or at least awarding based on that, knowing that there's, that there's this, you know, issue that could take place.
I like that.
And, and the pavers, I wish I could bring you a block and show you what they're going to look like. Essentially, they're pavers on a rock bed and then they put, they put little rock chips in between and then you have to clean them out. We know that there's a cleaning maintenance program as a part of that. We don't exactly know what we're getting ourselves into as far as doing that, but it'll at least be one section of alleyway. And if we look to do this in the future, at least give us a good, you know, basis on how to clean them. We have a vac truck that we're planning and fabricating kind of a, for the lack of a better term, a vacuum head, you know, like a, in your household, to put on the end of the vac truck and then try and, you know, clean the pavers.
Why sweeten leave?
So we're doing that alley because of the project?
This project, I think, was, I don't know how the project development ever happened on this, to be honest.
We, this was submitted because we had a local match identified and they had, they were, they had gotten funds to do their, their half of the alley already. We looked at this as a way that we could leverage off of the project that they were doing. Allowed us to do some work without any additional funds from us.
Very good. You guys good?
Yes.
All right. Brings us number six, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Mount Pleasant Street HMA overlay project. Nick, get back here.
Threw me off.
I'm good at that.
The HMA project for Mount Pleasant Street was let. It was a DOT letting, so it was done up in Ames. This project is from Roosevelt to Gear. It's a full, it's a, it's a mill and fill project with a four-to-three lane conversion. It's a shared project with West Burlington. The dollar figure on that came in at the low of Norris Asphalt at 1.66 million, which is higher than the original estimate. The original estimate was done four years ago as part of an STP grant back then. And so you see a little bit of overrun on, on what our original estimate was. In the budget, we have about 1.7, but with engineering, that, that puts us over the top. In the conversation with, with Jim, we had talked about using some of the borrowing funds, the $1.4 million that we used for road and rehab. We had talked about using some for the agency street. Each project is overrun because we had a little bit of buffer in there from not doing the PCC project this year. And so we'll probably use a little bit more of that on this project, should we have any, any more cost overruns. But, I mean, right now, this time of year, I think the environment bidding wise, I think you're going to see a little higher, higher bids coming in than maybe what original estimates were. Plus, this type of project was done, was estimated four years ago. And so if your inflationary numbers aren't done accurately, you know, things can, can go over budget quite easily from an estimate standpoint. But my recommendation would be to award to Norris.
You guys have any questions? So what are your thoughts on future pricing and construction?
I think one of the bigger problems that we have is, is bidding in June. I don't, I want to get away from this. I want to get away or get to bidding in December, January, February. But in order to do that, engineering plans have to be done in November, December, January so that they're able to go out to bid. This project has, this is a DOT project, so there's a lot of hoops to jump through with check plans and environmental review and archaeological review. So there's been a lot of things that have kind of held up this process. Ideally, I would like to have done it last year, but there, there was a lot on the docket for new staff. And I, there, it's still, whether or not we can get this project done this fall is still, you know, it might bleed into next spring by the time we get to complete with this project, but.
Does that hang up on our end or is there the hoops that we've got?
Kind of a combination of both, in all honesty. I mean, I had some staff changeover and then the DOT process is not an easy process to follow.
Yeah. So do we expect to start doing our letting, if I can, starting this year in the fall?
Well, we're lucky this next fiscal year, meaning fiscal year 1920 construction season. We don't have any big DOT projects like we had on the list this year. We have a lot more local projects and then sewer separation type work. So, I mean, that, that's the benefit is that we'll, we should be able to get those local projects done and approved through city council in a lot quicker time than what this took.
Going to the state. You guys good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you, sir. Number seven, is a resolution approving preliminary plat of the Ridge subdivision. Mr. Teslin.
This is a 21-lot residential subdivision in the county two-mile area. A couple maps in the package just to show the general location. It's about a mile outside of town between Highway 61 and Irish Ridge Road off of Upper With this being the city limits and this being the subdivision. We have review to our, through our subdivision process for subdivisions in the two-mile area, our growth area, that go through the planning commission and city council. The plat is in your handout. It's kind of difficult to see, but there's 21 lots and then the yellow here shown is what they're proposing for their roadway. At the planning commission meeting on June 19th, they voted six to zero to recommend approval of the preliminary plat based on meeting county standards for subdivision in lieu of meeting all the site design standards of our city zoning code. In condition upon lots 20 and 21 having frontage on a public roadway, they initially had the cul-de-sac here pulled back to approximately here with a private drive, so they did extend that cul-de-sac further down so that they'd all have access off of Public Street being a county road. Staff did recommend that lots beyond the 750 feet length of roadway, that's dead-end roadway or open at one end be sprinkled, have residential sprinklers. The planning commission did not carry that forward. Their recommendation was for approval without residential sprinklers. So the 750 feet point would start at this point down here. You have two access points in until this point and then from this point forward, even though there's a circle drive, there's only one access point to all these lots. So that 750-foot point starts right here where you have access from the eastern and western side. Based on our city code, we don't allow streets over 750 feet unless there's a special exception and that exception has been, I guess, through Scott Zeiser's subdivision, over 750, it has to have sprinklers. And he agreed to that for four lots that were over that 750-foot distance. And that was the recommendation through the staff and the fire department that all lots over 750 feet beyond that two-access point be sprinkled. And as I mentioned, planning commission discussed it and did not make that recommendation going forward.
Council.
Is it gravel or paved?
This would be a gravel road.
And is the entrance to this road at the peak of that hill?
Um, well, they have one entrance down in here and then one entrance down here and there's kind of some ravines and then hill that goes up this way.
But is the entrance or the exit at the peak of the hill or at the bottom of it?
I'd have, I have, I'd have to get out there and look again.
Is there just the one entrance or is it two?
There's the two. Two entrances, but they practically only serve these lots here. This is, from this point forward, there's just one entrance for everything else.
At least the further west one is not near the peak. I don't know what the other one is.
I think the further west one is the peak.
Is it?
I, I think, but I, maybe without going out there. So how's this work as far as with the fire marshal? The planning commission is saying not, no sprinklers, but in order to be fair to other developers in the past, does he cut, does he weigh in on it before we approve it or how do we handle that?
We do this as our normal development review for any subdivision. We send it to all the departments within the city, including utilities, and get comments back on their suggestions. Our city code says that we have review for subdivisions in the two-mile. It's not real clear on, and we don't require paved roads for all of them, so that, that's something that we're, staff's looking at now. But it does state 750-foot maximum for one dead-end roadway and over that, under the fire code, that's where he has that requirement of sprinklers for something longer than 750 feet.
Yeah, I got that. I just didn't know if he, if he'd already gone through that process where staff has gone through it. It's just strictly planning commission is?
Staff does review before it goes to planning commission. Yep. And then we submit those comments to the planning commission and that, that was submitted to the planning commission.
So Eric, just as we had a developer here a while back asking about, or bringing up an issue with fire, having the fire sprinklers in the house. Does this developer have to go through a variance in order to be able to get that? So because at the end of the day, they're not meeting the requirements laid out?
Well, that developer, Zager, it wasn't a variance, his was an appeal.
Sure. No, I understand that. But, but does this developer need to go through the same process or is it all done through the planning portion of it?
The 750-foot section allows for sprinklers over, there's no variance of that sprinkler requirement.
Okay.
It's just whether council would approve this subdivision or not. The difficult part is, in the county two-mile area, we have subdivision review. We don't have building permit review. We don't go out and inspect the codes. We're not issuing a permit. The county does all that. So trying to mix our codes for development with building codes gets to be a little, little more of an issue there. He's enforcing this not from a building standpoint, but from a roadway standpoint.
Okay. Now, I have a problem with that. I just want to make sure everybody's on the level of the plan.
So you're allowed, Eric, they're allowed to not have that requirement on this subdivision and it's treated differently than if it was in city limits because of that distinction?
In city limits, we issue a permit through our building permit process and fire codes and building codes all apply. And in the county, they don't enforce.
They don't enforce our codes.
Our codes. Okay. That was, thank you.
Everybody's good? All right. Moving to the consent agenda. The first is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Does anybody have any problems with the nuisances? Number two is a resolution approving the purchase of an easement from 2500 Mason Road, pin number 16-07-127-008 for public utilities and a pedestrian trail associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk. Mr. McGregor.
Good evening again. The next four are all easements, purchasing either permanent or temporary. The first one listed is a ten, wait, I'll just repeat. What was, what was the first one? These might be out of order.
The first one is public utilities and pedestrian trail associated with 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
What was the pin number?
167127008.
Okay. This is a permanent easement in the amount of $1,700 purchased from Gary and Christine Shealy. So it's the house at the, at the very bottom there.
Okay.
We used our standardized system of, of evaluation of the property and then went into conversation negotiation with the property owner. The cost of the easements will be put towards the project.
Number three is a, I'm just going to, we'll go through these and then I'll let the council deal with it as a whole. Number three is a resolution approving the purchase of a permanent easement and temporary easement for the First Presbyterian Church. This number is 16-07201006 for public utilities, a pedestrian trail and construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
This is also a purchase of a permanent easement and, and then a temporary as well in the amount of $1,647. There's also a kind of a side thing that those, that area is farmed. We have an agreement with the, the tenant on the property that should the construction project damage or ruin any sort of crop, that there's a damages award for that as well.
Number four is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for SS Mary and Patrick Church of West Burlington, Iowa and John and Paul Church of Burlington, Iowa. This is number 1607126011 for construction and grading associated with the 2018 Mason Road sidewalk.
This is just a temporary easement to be able to do grading along the new, the new grade that we'll set and this is just a dollar.
And then number five is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary easement for 1431 Cambridge Drive, pin number 16-07-127-013 for construction and grading associated with 2018 Mason Road sidewalk again.
This is just a temporary easement as well. And when we send out temporary easements, we always send an offer on what we will, will pay you to, to access and use your property for, for part of the construction project. The previous landowner decided to use $1, but for this one, we will be awarding $396 for, for that purpose. And in this overall project, I should maybe talk about the, the overall scheme of the project. This is a, the Mason Road Trail project. What will be constructed is a 10-foot wide shared-use path. You can see the connection points that I tried to draw on this map quickly this afternoon. Is that Sequoia Drive to hook up with the rest of that, there's a shared-use trail there as well by, by the middle school. And then it will go, follow Mason Road until it connects to an existing sidewalk down at Haskell Street. Haskell Street is just an existing sidewalk of, of about four foot wide. So it'll transition into just a normal sidewalk, but it gives a, a much-needed connection for, for a lot of kids actually walking the road through this section. And I think this, I don't know, this is a, is a safe bike or safe route to school?
This was a TAP grant.
TAP grant.
About four years ago as well. And that's the difficulty of getting some of these estimates, doing them four years ago, two engineers ago.
Yep.
Okay. Do you guys have questions for one through, or for two through five resolutions on the easements?
No.
Everybody's good?
Yep.
Okay. Number six is resolution accepting the community development block grant for the Locust Basin sewer separation. Mr. McGregor.
This, this grant here is an, is an award amount of $600,000 from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. That is, it's block grant money from the HUD. It's Housing and Urban Development Department. We will use this funds, this is actually the third attempt to, to get these funds for the, the needed Locust Basin separation. The base, the Locust Basin is the smallest basin that you see there. The estimated price is four, is $5.3 million. What we're trying here is a little bit different than what we've tried in separation and other areas. We're trying to rehab our sanitary sewer as well as install the necessary storm sewer to separate and meet compliance. A lot of the issues that we've run into in the past is that we've neglected any of the sanitary sewer and then we have a lot of I and I issues or inflow and infiltration into the sanitary system and that causes quite a bit of backups. So this is a little bit pricier project than maybe what we would have normally have done in the past, but I think it helps us in the long term. Um, moving forward, we're gonna try and go a different route with renegotiating our consent order, but because we have the award at six hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna try and get this done. Um, we, this will also go in contingency with, uh, sanitary revolving, or not sanitary, statewide revolving fund money. So it's a loan. Uh, we actually did the planning design loan at zero percent, uh, with the Iowa Economic, or is it the Iowa, uh, Finance Authority? Thank you, appreciate it. Um, and, and so we will wrap, uh, these two projects together. There is requirements because it's federal funds, but we were already going to have to comply with those uh, because of the SRF loan that we have. Um, it, it has the Davis Bacon, the prevailing wages, uh, the things of that nature. Um, but the, the thing about doing this overall project is, is we do have, when we borrow the funds, we have a percentage of the, of the loan amount that we all to do, able to do green infrastructure. Um, I think I've talked about it before, but that planned project is around the Grimes School and doing some permeable pavement in the parking and then also doing a bio swale on the north side. Um, I don't remember the dollar figures on those, but I know that to do in the five, five point three million, we'll get about a half million dollars back, uh, to be able to do those green infrastructure projects. So.
When's the, the construction time?
It will probably not start this fall. By the time we jump through all the hoops that we have to after we accept this, it'll probably be next spring, early next spring.
And what's the timeline length?
It'll take quite a while. It'll probably be about a year long construction project. There's, there's a lot of, uh, moving pieces as far as when they're ripping up some of the roadways, they have to leave certain sections open so, so residents can, can get in and access their property.
Okay.
Nick, Nick, can't we, uh, start that project yet this fall? We had at least one roadway we wanted to rip up for that.
You want me to rip up every road you count?
Just, just the one in front of Eric's house.
I already have.
He's been trying to cause trouble all afternoon.
I have.
All right, you guys good? Um, resolution amending fees for environmental nuisances. Mr. Teslin?
We talked about this, uh, previous discussion item, uh, with our update tie works and then, uh, just for our, uh, basis of our notices. Um, doing away with the fee upon abatement by city and, um, just having one set fee, whether it's be first and second or subsequent, uh, nuisances. So this will remain as, uh, what it currently is for, uh, payment upon, uh, council resolution, a hundred and two, a hundred dollar. Just making it easier for staff and for our new system and hopefully through the letters, less confusion.
Right on. You guys good with that, right?
No.
Okay, uh, we have some public hearing set for July sixteen. The first one's consideration of sale of property locally known as one thousand three Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. That makes somebody a lovely home, by the way.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Please do.
We're trying to, uh, get more information out on these, so we are doing an open house on, uh, Chalfont and Locust. Uh, for Chalfont, Tuesday, June twenty-sixth between noon and one and from five to six, we'll have some staff there to be able to answer questions on what the process is and at least show what the inside of the house is. So anyone interested wants to stop by Tuesday, June twenties, tomorrow, Tuesday, June twenty-sixth between noon and one or five to six at Chalfont, uh, they can do so. And we put out notices on our website and Facebook page as well.
The word is that when Elvis Presley was passing through, that he spent a couple of nights holed up in that house, so it's gonna make somebody a lovely home.
I can't believe he went there.
I can't believe I went there too. But anyways, I did. Anybody, everybody's good? Okay. Number two is consideration of sale of property locally known as nine eighteen Locust Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Again.
And that one's on Wednesday, June twenty-seventh from noon to one and five to six as well with staff on hand, uh, be able to answer questions.
Okay. He didn't stay the night there, but I heard he had a pork chop sandwich from out of that house. Number C is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with historic Kama LLC for encroachment into city right of way adjacent to the property located at three hundred and three ten Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. You gotta say something on that?
Well, this is a
Please do.
An existing encroachment there, just transfer of ownership, uh, the stairs on the third street side. It's already existing and they previously got an encroachment, but policy requires the new owners to get one.
Okay.
Uh, D is consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen Mason Road Shared Use Path Project. E is consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen White Park renovations. All right, discussion items. Treasurer's report. Annette, class of eighty-seven, come on in.
All right, May's treasurer's report was in the packet. Um, I could tell you that there's nothing unusual going on. Um, he, and since we talked about the Mazel project, that's one of the funds that's fifty-four fifty-two, if you look on the second page, is in the hole and that'll be covered by the SRF construction loan. It'll be rolled into that once we get that figured out. Um, otherwise, the other things are like VM and property maintenance. Those are just the normal things that run behind till we get to the year end. Speaking of which, will be next month, well, this month for, but June's treasurer's report and that one will stay open for, those of you that haven't been on council, it'll stay open for quite a while and will not be finalized till our audit is done. So every month you'll get an update on our June thirtieth balances until we're done.
One fund on here, uh, the self-insurance fund. Expenditures year-to-date are four hundred and, four hundred and seventeen thousand. We budgeted three hundred thousand and I think next year, three fifty. We're going back up to, we'd been at three fifty and built up the funds fairly well and the last two years have really hit on this. Uh, that may be something that, uh, in the following year, we need, depending on how claims go the first half of the year, that we may end up having to increase what we set aside there, uh, in the next budget.
Yeah, just because insurance costs have been higher?
Claims. It's all based off, when, when you're self-insurer, you need to have enough funds sitting there to cover claims and we have. It's just, we probably will need to change that allocation as we move forward.
Yeah, we should, because we just kinda look at it every year and estimate what you think they're going to be, but this year was higher than.
Is that like a rolling average or just a?
Well, it's, uh, it was several hundred thousand in the hole in two thousand twelve.
Right.
We increased it to about three hundred thousand between two thousand thirteen and two thousand four, end in seventeen through two thousand sixteen. And the last two years have just been higher claims and we kinda mentioned we had one claim that was a big chunk of that, but it wasn't the only one. There's a couple of other ones too.
Yeah, there was a couple.
It, it just doesn't take too much to, a couple of those claims, when you get plus a hundred thousand on one, one issue, it just adds up fairly quickly.
Where's that stop guy? What are we, fund two and then what kicks up?
Four hundred.
On it, on one claim. And so we, I don't know if we've ever hit, well, not that I've seen for records.
No, not that I've
Ever hit that. But if you look at what our insurance costs are for, for work comp, they're significant, they're still significantly lower than what going with a traditional work comp policy would be.
Will the, this is kind of an awful topic question, but will those rates change at all with the semi, with the?
So that'll help us, or could potentially help us, but when we pay claims as, as we incur them, what that just means is it'll, it, that kinda, as you go to a more of an automated system on the garbage, you just hope to not have as many claims in the future as what we've had.
Wow.
And it could help us to, to manage what we have to set aside, but, I mean, that's one that we won't be able to, since we don't have like, we're not like a true insurance company that is pooling with a whole bunch of resources that will take a look at that and maybe give some consideration of what your mod should be.
Okay. You guys good? We're good because you're good. Thanks, Annette.
Thanks.
Steph.
Thanks, Annette. Work?
Thank you.
Appointments. You guys have, uh, anything on appointments? Discussion item number two, page ninety. We've got Airport Authority, the term for commission member Charles Walsh expires six thirty. He expressed interest in serving additional four-year term. Uh, currently there are two men and one woman on the board. It's requested the council consider reappointing Charles Walsh.
Do, um, never mind. I was gonna ask, did we have an application from Dwight Walsh to be reappointed just a couple of weeks ago to this board?
He, he hasn't expressed wanting to be one that was considered as well as Charlie at this point.
Okay.
Okay. And then Economic Development Advisory Board, um, term for commission board member Owen Sloan expires. Um, Owen expressed interest in serving additional three-year term. It's requested the council consider reappointing Mr. Sloan to a new three-year term, which will expire. The term for commission member Elizabeth Van Vlech, Sally expires seven one. She's expressed interest in serving additional three-year term. It's requested the consent, the council reconsider or consider reappointing Elizabeth as well for three-year term. Um, everybody's good or any issues there? You're good? Okay. All right then. Um, Mr. Teslin, anything closing? Okay, uh, Counselor Murray, anything closing?
No, I can't think of anything.
Uh, Counselor Billups?
Uh, we're not talking about this future discussion item tonight?
No, but do you, you wanna talk about it?
No, I don't. Just ask me.
I'll, I'll, I'll mention something about it.
Okay, okay, thanks. I just wanted to know why I was there and then you weren't gonna, you know.
Go ahead, Jim. I'll come back to you, but go ahead, Jim, on a future discussion.
Okay, well, that nutrient reduction strategy, um, talked with HR Green and they'll be here July thirtieth to make a presentation. We have to do a, we had to do a study as part of our last permit. Uh, we have to do a five-year permit for NPDES, National Pollution Discharge. Elimination system. One of the things that they required was that we monitor our nutrients and phosphates. Nit, yeah, nitrogen phosphors, uh, for a year and a half and they, they went ahead and did that study and then what they had to do as part of that study was put together financially feasible plan to, to bring those down to some recommended levels and they'll present the, that plan. I wanted to make sure that they got in front of you and had a chance to talk about what those, uh, standards are, why we have to do this, um, and what those estimates look like. But as a, just as a frame of reference, it's a six million dollar project that they're looking at with an annual operating cost of three hundred thousand. So that, and if you look at what our system is as a whole, we bring in on this sewer site about six hundred thou, or six million a year, so that's about a five percent increase just to cover the operating costs of that, uh, through mandate that D and R, Department of Natural Resources is implementing, uh, to meet EPA standards. Significant issue for us. Timing of that is one that we're gonna have to be worry, working on to, to work out over the course of the next year or two, along with all of our CSO elimination issues. We're gonna have Veenster and Kim here July nine, um, tentatively anyway, to talk about a boating infrastructure grant. We had last year been awarded a tier one boating infrastructure grant to do some planning and design work for a fairly expansive dock for the, the, was it the Mississippi Queen?
Yeah.
Uh, that's, and the Viking, though, that style of boat to be able to dock up on. Overall project of a three point five million. Um, they'll be looking, be presenting what they would have, uh, for final design on that. I think that included also, uh, maybe a restroom facility, uh, shower, uh, and a
Transit.
Fish cleaning area.
There's, there was like four or five things on that.
It's something that your group had looked at. So they'll be presenting what they're looking at for tentative design to submit for a tier two grant, that's second phase. After you do the planning to go for one and a half million dollars on that future project. Um, we have funding for a match on that through the Tiger Grant. So those are some things that are gonna be working in tandem as we move forward. Uh, but they wanna make sure that you have an understanding of where we are on that. It also uses, uh, what's going on with the flood wall improvements and other work that we're doing locally as some of our match on that. So we're able to, as long as we make sure that all these pieces are moving forward, they all can, there's pieces of them that can be used as match on others. But that tentative design he'll be bringing forward, uh, July nine. I'm not sure of the timing of when they're looking to submit, but it is fairly soon for that tier two project. Going along with that, last year we had received the Great Places designation for the downtown, or for the riverfront area. And, uh, Charlie had presented three different tentative projects for you to look at for funding, uh, going after, uh, grant funding from the state. Uh, the three projects were splash pad or an amphitheater or some seating with a shade structure over it. Last year, the council decided not to do that. We still have two cycles left where a choice could be made to do that. So he'll be bringing something, I assume, in July. Uh, we have to let the state know by August one if we plan to apply. Uh, if we do plan to apply, that is due by, I think, November first? Or maybe the end of November, one or the other. Um, but that's something where, uh, there's, I think last year he looked at a potential of doing a project where we were asking for a hundred and, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's more that's available that you could ask for, but you've also gotta look at
There's a fifty thousand dollar match.
There's a, there's a match that goes with it, but there's also a cap. There's only so much state funding and if you ask for too much when there's several places across the state that are applying you, you gotta look at where you're gonna be competitive, 'cause they don't wanna put all their money into one spot either on this. But he'll be presenting those again to the council to talk about what, what, if you are interested in applying for one of those projects and if so, which one you would wanna be, uh, having some more information come forward on. It's one that, uh, the local match on that, uh, there's a potential that, again, we can use the Tiger Grant as the match on it.
Would, just on the boating infrastructure, they're gonna present to us and maybe I should save this question for them, but if we're awarded that, when would that project start?
My, my guess is it's about a twenty twenty-one time.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're all, they're all interconnected and there's an awful lot of work going on down there and something that Nick could tell you is, is it takes an awful lot of oversight to oversee one of those projects.
And when do you have four of them going on at once?
It's, it's, has the potential to be overwhelming. Um, I think that you put a lot of time into the flood wall project this year and that was with having, uh, V and K doing the construction oversight. There's just still a lot of issues that come up that need input from us in order to, to move forward. So, and really to be honest, that, those are some of the things that have come up that make it harder for when we talk about bids on some of these street projects and getting them out on time. There are so many balls in the air, it's hard. If you get too many balls in the air at the same time, you can't keep them all moving forward. Uh, and that's, I think, part of what the issue has been with some of those projects. I would mention radio next week. I'm not, I'm not in town next week, but the fourth is Wednesday and I don't know that I have anyone else who wants to be here on Wednesday, the fourth either. Yeah, I didn't think so. Care facility, that has completed and you issued your retention check, uh, is on this next claims list.
Sweet.
So that part is done. You still have, before we can, we need to go through the process of subdividing those lots and you need to get sewer lines done in there and some of that is gonna be a replacement of one, or relining of one of our lines.
Probably replacement.
That's what Nick has been pushing you to. That's gonna have to happen in order to get those sold off. Uh, we're not to that point. That's probably something that's really gonna be this next year's, a, a next year project uh, by the time it is all said and done.
How many, how many lots are we subdividing that into?
Three.
Three?
Would it make sense to find out if there's anybody who just wants to buy it as one? Pay, they would've paid for three, so we're not putting utilities in for three?
Well, I mean
Or do we want three?
We're gonna run that line regardless. It's a sewer out the back end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're not running.
It's not, they'll still have to run their own individual sewer lines.
They'll have to tie in themselves to what we're doing.
The line we have that's back there isn't in very good shape.
I was just trying to see if we can save a little money, but if we're not gonna be doing it anyways, we have to do it.
DESCOM has gone through the process of hiring a new director and I think that person starts July one?
August.
August, August seventh. So it's been a process that has been interesting to work through, uh, as a lot of transitions tend to be. Garbage was not on the work session for tonight. I hope, are you gonna be ready to talk about that next time, Don? But what we need to talk about is, we, we can order the, the carts through, uh, there's a, we're part of an association, US Communities, which goes through a bid, a competitive bid process and we already have a price on the the carts through there, so we can order through that system, but we need to know what kinda carts to order. Who, how many, how many thirty-five gallon, how many sixty-five gallon, how many ninety-five gallon? So we need to go through the process of surveying all the customers. That's one that we're, we're probably looking at having a contract with a firm to That's one that we're, we're probably looking at having a contract with a firm to do that survey for us, get those results collected, establish the timelines for when we are gonna have those surveys go out, when they're gonna come back. Tentatively, the, the default size will be a 65 gallon container unless they return their survey and ask for a 35 gallon container, or a 95 gallon container, or verify that they want the 65 gallon. They're automatically, if, for those that don't return the survey, they're gonna get the 65 gallon container. And we, part of what we, this next time, having that timeline established, getting this done in a, in a timely manner is gonna be pretty important to get those surveys out and returned, and in a way that we can still get carts delivered, hopefully the end of October, I think is kind of our timeline to try to have it done the first week in November, maybe?
Latest. Probably, hopefully more in the middle of October.
Middle of October. You'd like to have it done, well, we wanna have it done before you get to, if, if we don't get it done prior to hitting the win, the true winter months, it just has to wait till next year. So that's, that's what we wanna make sure, is everyone's on the same page for what the timing is, that we're looking to do things at the next work session.
Hey, Don, I had a question for you. Sorry to get you all the way up here. So the question I have, and I got it from somebody in the community, she said, "Well, if you're gonna give me a new cart, what am I gonna do with my old one? It's too big for me to put in my car, take someplace, and it's not gonna fit in the can."
I've seen some programs where they've said, if you have the larger container, if you have the 65 or 95, the 33 gallon can would fit inside.
Well, she wants the 35 gallon can.
Well, and I see that if they wish to throw it away, number one, it'll have to be identified or marked accordingly, so we don't take it, and they turn around and say, "Hey, I didn't want you to throw that away, buy me another can." But, of course, it could sit aside, the 35, and they just pick it up and throw it in the truck.
Okay.
We haven't looked into, gee, is, is this material recyclable, or, you know, some people have plastic cans, various types of plastic, rubber, there's the metal, the galvanized metal cans.
She says she doesn't want it. I mean, she's been putting trash in it for 10 years, so she doesn't wanna take it inside the garage or anything, she just wants to get rid of it.
Yeah, well, probably, we, we have to make that clear, but they'll have to mark it in some way, shape, fashion.
Could we add something to the, to the, what did I just say? What was it called?
Recycling.
Thank you. Can we just add that to the recycling, you know, if, if people have one that they can't get rid of, or, you know, if they're sticking to the same size as.
Well, we don't, we don't operate the recycling center, and what materials are recyclable and what aren't. I mean, that would be some conversation we could have with them, but educating the public about what can and what cannot is not an easy matter.
I'm glad you brought up education, because I still think it would be wise for us to have the little sticker inside the lid that has the little kid, you know, with the little X, with the little kid stepping on, you know, jumping on top of it with the X, it says, "No!" And then the little garbage can with the snow cone with the X, "No!" You know, attached to the garbage can. I just think, to me, I just think that's the best advertisement you get, because they gotta look at that every time they throw trash in there.
I, I, is it possible to, 'cause you had the cans on display, we still have those, right? Is there a place that maybe we could put those, like the depot or something?
I have three sets in my building at the wastewater plant right now, and we've talked about it. We haven't finalized plans, but I'm, I've already talked with Nick about possibly putting three out there at the Public Works facility in the lobby, because Roosevelt is a main travel way for people going out to eat, or going to a store, shopping. They've got a parking lot, it's not a huge parking lot, but they've got visitor parking there, and they've got an open area. The second place I thought about putting a set of three would be at the library. I've talked with the librarian about doing that. There's a lot of people, library's a very busy place. You've got people who have young children, who tend to be sometimes larger generator because of all the things that go along with having kids. So they'd have the opportunity, if they're going there for books, or videos, or whatever, they'd have an opportunity to look at the cans. And then you have, you have retired people who like to go to the library and spend time, spend the day, so.
Sure.
They'll get to look at the 35 versus the 65 versus the 95. And then we, although we're not really easy to get to, I thought we'd keep a, a set at the wastewater plant, where the people who are in the know and deal with the solid waste on a regular basis, we could certainly answer questions. The other locations would probably have a sign up that would say, you know, "If you'd like to talk to somebody about this, call this number," which would be our number down there.
Okay, excellent.
And that's, that's our preliminary.
Thank you.
I think that's an excellent idea. I also would add to that, that we wanna make sure that we educate them, either on the survey, make sure you picked the right size, go down to the library, go down to Public Works and, and check it out, and let them know the re-issuing fee of $35 if you make a mistake, so you wanna make sure you get the right size. And then also, if the survey could be on bright colored paper, so we could educate them, look for the neon orange paper, or whatever, and make sure you get it back, get it returned.
No, I think it, it might've been 35, but I was gonna just.
I can't remember what it was.
We're probably gonna have a period, a transition period there for the first couple of months where people can change out, or.
I don't wanna do that.
Well, I think West Burlington did.
That would be a, a point of discussion.
So that's something that we need to talk about, too, whether we're gonna do that, or, or are you gonna set that fee to start immediately?
Right. Usually, there's a fee associated with it, but not necessarily right off the bat, and that's what City Manager is referring to. Some communities give the household first 30 or 60 days, they can exchange it. I don't really know, I mean, if you have a bunch of people, take 35s, and suddenly they say, "Well, we don't want these 35s, we want 65." What are you gonna do with all those 35s? You bought them. They're gonna have the city emblem on the side, "They're ours," and where are they gonna be stored? We still have to sort out where all these extra parts and cans are gonna be stored.
Administratively, that would be a nightmare. I think place the cans a lot of places, they can come and see them and try to get an idea.
Well, that, that would be the intent, is to try to encourage the first, the correct choice the first time. And as I mentioned before, a key matter here, too, I think, is, well, the mayor, you keep saying, "Go large, Burlington, go large." Citywide Cleanup Program is a program where there's a lot of small items that get thrown away, which I realize you like to see those recycled, go into other people's houses, and so on and so forth. But if we were to make in the attempt to move the Citywide Cleanup to a truly bulky item-type program, a bulky item being the item that doesn't fit inside your garbage can, if you have the larger can, well, then you have some additional space that you're maybe not using for day-to-day garbage, that you can put those smaller items in throughout the year, or in a focused period of time when you're doing cleaning at your home. But if you have a 35, you may not have that space.
When it comes to trashcans, man, bigger's better, my friend.
I, I'm concerned about going into the program, encouraging selection of the can size, and then after the fact, later on, changing the Citywide Cleanup, and it would be kinda like you pulled the rug out from under us, "I like the 35," and now you're taking away our Citywide Cleanup Program, as was. If I'd known that, I would've done something different. So.
Good stuff. You guys good with Don?
It wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, you shouldn't get into much discussion here.
Sorry, too much detail, but.
Thanks, Don.
I just wanted to ask that quick question, 'cause I know that young lady's watching.
Okay, well, you did good for her, then. Are, are we good? Jim, are you good?
Mentioned a couple other things. Greater Burlington Sports Facilities is moving forward on their plans. They are still hopeful of being done with that facility by the end of December. I think actually, December 18 might be there. Well, maybe it's just December 2018, and I'm getting the day, the 18th on that. But that's, they wanna be done and, and be able to start hosting tournaments in January. I think that they are looking to adjust the parking that they put in original, with the original structure, to include enough for their, their long-term needs, ask for us to put 300, $350,000 over to do a, look at a resolution, but for us to give them $350,000 towards that, so that, and then they would incorporate the parking, and I think the sidewalks that are on their property into their original design that gets bid out, so that gets constructed this year, rather than waiting until afterwards.
Is that above the 500?
No, that's part of the 500. And I, as, as we talked about, what they could realistically ask, or we have some parking on, over on the Recplex side that needs to be done. I think the engineer's estimate on that was about $130,000? 120, 130? So that, it's, that, 100, leaving 150,000 to cover those costs, it's hopeful that that would make sure that we had enough there to do that. That will have to come up at a, a future meeting, when, I, I'm not sure what the timing of that would be, but I'd assume in July. Part of that will still be needing a shared parking agreement for the, they're gonna, their max capacity is in the 720?
640.
640, so then they would need 320, 160 spots. They're not gonna, that initial design that they're doing isn't gonna be 160, I think it's more like 100, sort of.
We did that resolution that allowed the 50%.
So they already have that, Don?
Yeah, they only had to add 70 on site for that.
But they'll be well over that. I think they're over 100 with the, that original design. Nick, would you like to talk a little bit about stormwater rates and flood wall preparations for, with Hescos?
Already talked enough, but, stormwater rates, so we just met with Waterworks today and finalized the bills that are gonna go out for stormwater rates. There will be some, some people that'll see, I gave a presentation for over a month and a half, but those are gonna go out here July 2nd. We will, we'll be setting up a website with all the impervious surface on it, G I S-wise. I think Austin was publishing that yet this afternoon. And then flood wall operations, we, the, the peak is supposed, or the crest is supposed to go to 17.1. We're kinda waiting to see what it's gonna do, but our plan right now is to set up at least the Hesco at the corner, because it, it sits at about 16.5 when you start seeing water come up. So if we don't get something in there right away, we could have issues.
That's on the north end.
That's on the north end. The south end is always, has remained up.
How many Hescos are they gonna have to use for that?
Probably four, maybe, just to get it set up, so that we can, we can operate. Should it go higher than that? It's not ideal to do that, but that's, that's kinda where we sit as far as the, the river coming up. The construction project is coming to the end. All the concrete has been laid. They just gotta do some seeding work and, and finalize the wall, and, you know, the wall is still up, but there's still some things that I wanna make sure are okay before we take it down, and that'll be quite the process, too. And speaking of roads being tore up, you will see our Seal Coat Project start up next week. Our, our asphalt project on Flint Hills Drive, so a lot of the detour that people use to try and avoid an agency, we're gonna start doing some concrete work this week, which shouldn't impede traffic, but then the following week, we should probably start seeing some asphalt work. And then we have a pre-construction meeting coming up with Kramer and Associates for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. Hopefully, we have a, a date. That Mount Pleasant Street Bridge will be, will be shut down, and then the detour will, it will, will be in place for the next year. So hopefully, we get that information out pretty soon.
Make sure everybody has the phone number to your office, Nick.
They already do.
That was nice, man. That was real nice. You good? I forgot a resolution, guys. You wanna turn to your back paper, please? All right, we have a resolution providing for a salary adjustment for the city manager. The City of Burlington is employed in which to continue to employ James E. Forneau, city manager for the City of Burlington. That is the city council that sets a determined salary benefits. Now, therefore, it resolved that the city manager's salary and benefit package will be adjusted July 1, 2018 as follows. Base salary shall be increased by 2.25%, 254, 258, effective July 1, 2018. All other benefits, allowances, and conditions of employment shall remain as previously approved and adopted. Again, this is on a resolution, because everybody else is getting their two and a quarter. We're putting Jim up for his two and a quarter, and we're leaving everything as is. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
This will be on the meeting come next week?
Yep.
So it's the same as everybody else on staff?
Yeah, and I, again, sorry about this at the last minute, but that was me, that's my fault. The mayor was slow, and I just didn't realize what time this was, but we wanna make sure that, I just wanna make sure that this is effective, as if everybody else is. If it wasn't, they would've just paid back pay, but it would've just been a bit of some extra paperwork, "Why kill the tree?" Are you guys, any questions or concerns?
It's the same as everybody else on staff and in the city, so I don't have a problem.
Good? Okay, that was the last one. I just wanna say thank you to Brian O for coming. It was, it was a fantastic weekend. I was running here, there, and everywhere, gotta take him to some really good places and show off. I gave him a little taste of Burlington, and he enjoyed all the food. The people were fantastic, took him downtown Burlington, which he spent most of his time, spent about 100 and some bucks in Weird Harold's, and went back for more. But while he was here, I, I talked to his wife on the telephone. It was, it was a good time, he was excited. I'll tell you what, Burlington really, man, I'll tell ya, Burlington really puts its best foot forward when needs, when need to be, and they did again this weekend. It was just a phenomenal weekend. I was just, just really, really proud to be the mayor this weekend. And also, I was called, I was in Hy-Vee, I met a German woman, and she called me Burgermeister. So there's that. Annie?
Yeah, that was, that was a good weekend at the Snake Alley Festival Films. You missed out, a lot of people, so you'll have to come back next year. And then, of course, the Bees are back in town this week later on, so that should be fun. And then I will let Matt talk about Saturdays.
So Saturday is the Taste of Burlington at Community Field. Restaurants will start serving their plates at 11:00 a.m., and that will run through 2:33. The band Stumptown has been booked to play from 2:30 until 5:00.
Stumptown?
Stumptown. They were at Steamboat Days, they were phenomenal at Steamboat Days.
Are they local, or?
Yeah. Yep. And then we've got, I don't know, a dozen or so inflatable activities, obstacle courses, dunk tanks, I mean, all kinds of fun stuff for kids to do. One of the cool things is, if you buy a bracelet, it's $10, and that covers the cost of being able to stay and hang out, listen to the bands. All the kids can go on the activities and participate in everything. It also includes the admission to the baseball game that evening, which they are doing fireworks at. So it's, it's an event that used to be in Burlington years ago, hasn't been around for 10 years or so that I'm aware of, so it's kinda making a comeback. So I would encourage everybody, if they're off, if they have an opportunity, it'd be a good time to come hang out, so.
How many food vendors, how many food?
And who?
The exact number, I don't know offhand, because we're doing some finalizing, but I know Chef Bodini from Hy-Vee is one, Applebee's is one. Orange Ember is there. Oh, yeah, the Hot Dog Place.
Doghouse.
Doghouse is there. There's, The Drake is there.
Taste of Burlington.
I, I wanna say we're somewhere around 15, 17 different restaurants.
Billy Sims, do you have Billy Sims there?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. So I wasn't in charge of that part.
You should've talked to Muzie, you should've asked her when you saw her this weekend.
But, but we've got some great restaurants coming, and I think there's, there's even a few more on the docket that are gonna get signed up, I think, tomorrow, and then they're gonna be finalized this Wednesday. So.
And this is on, this is on?
It's on Saturday.
Cause coming Saturday.
Saturday, so.
Starting at?
11.
Okay, this Saturday, starting at 11. There's gonna be a lot of food, good time. Man Rinker's gonna be there.
Community Field, and, and they're selling all the normal stuff, they'll have water and soda, and then you can buy beer while the band's playing in, in, during lunch hour. Community Field, so, and everything is set up to pretty much run back to back to back. So if you wanted to, you could come and stay the entire day and continue to take advantage of what's available.
High Tower's gonna be there all day. You're gonna be there all day, right?
I'm gonna be there all day.
If you get a wristband, you know, you can come and go, too.
Yeah, and, yeah, you can come and, you can get a wristband and, and listen to the band for a little bit, and kids can play on the activities, and you can leave, and then still have the opportunity to come back and be able to walk into the ballgame.
If you have a Burlington bracelet, what does that get you?
A pat on the back.
You heard it here first. Are we good to go?
I think so.
James, you good?
Where do you get those tickets?
Oh.
So you can buy them the day of the event. There's gonna be four different ticket booths. There's going to be four different ticket booths set up at the Taste. You can buy your bracelets there, and you can buy your tickets there.
Also, just want to give a quick shout out to Cara and to Tad, and everybody else that helped, helped out with that. It was a phenomenal job, just giving a quick shout out. You good? Okay, good night, thank you.